Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Madam Clerk, have you received any correspondence on tonight's agenda?
No, we have not.
All right. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Dynas.
Here.
Councilmember Diedrich.
Here.
Councilmember Temple.
Here.
Acting Mayor Carwin.
Here.
And Mayor Estrada is absent.
Thank you very much. This turns us to our words of inspiration. It's Planning Commissioner Tammy Ramirez. Oh, you were walked by the podium. I didn't see you there.
Yes, hi.
Planning Commissioner Tammy Ramirez, please come to the podium and provide us some words of inspiration.
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tam, and thank you to our city staff for inviting me here tonight. First, we recognize our mayor, who continues his service and deployment. His courage and commitment remind us of what leadership looks like when it's grounded in character, sacrifice, and responsibility. His example calls each of us to lead with purpose, heart, and resilience. We hold him and his family in our thoughts and wish him strength and safe return. As he serves our country, our mayor Pro-Tam has stepped forward with steadiness and humility. His leadership has kept our city moving forward. Moments like this refills something meaningful. When one leader is called away, another rises. Not to replace, but to reinforce the team. That spirit of shared leadership is one of Menifee's greatest strengths. To our honorable city council members, your decision shaped the long-term story of our community. Every vote influences families, neighborhoods, and the future we are building together. And with each decision, you carry the voice of our residents to the dais. President Kennedy once said, "Efforts and courage are not enough without purpose and direction." Your purpose is evident, your direction is focused, and your courage is showing through your commitment to service. You also lead with the understanding that no one is perfect. Mistakes can happen, but progress is built through accountability, reflection, and the willingness to improve. My hope is that our community continues partnering with you, supporting you and recognizing the humanity within public service. When leaders and residents move forward together, momentum becomes unstoppable. Across the nation, we see political divides that create gridlock and strained relationships. But here in Menifee, we choose a different path. We show that strong and sometimes differing opinions can coexist with deep respect. We demonstrate that collaboration uncompromised our marks of wisdom. And we model that progress is possible when dignity guides our discussions and shared purpose guides our decisions. Unity in the city is active, intentional, and powerful. And as you continue to lead with integrity, you're building more than policy. You're building legacy. Our children, our children, and future leaders are watching. Through your conduct, they learn courage, teamwork, and character. You shape tomorrow's leaders simply by the way you lead today. And when our mayor returns, I know this momentum will continue with the renewed season of teamwork, vision, and shared commitment to Menifee's future. I thank you for your service, and I wish you all a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramirez. All right, now it's time for our Pledge of Allegiance. I see Robert Frederick here from Waste Management. Would you please lead us in the flag salute? Rise if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, time for presentations. Would the city council please join me at the front of the dais for the first presentation? There we go. Orlando Alonso, would you please join us up at the front? So Orlando has been selected by Councilmember Dean Dynas to receive our honor of Citizen of the Month, so I'm going to let Councilmember Dynas explain to us the reasoning behind his decision.
Thank you. You know, we have this outstanding Citizen of the Month program, and, you know, we've been encouraging residents to put names forward because us, as a council, you know, we only reach so far out into the community, but there's so many more residents doing things that should be recognized that don't get recognized only because we don't see them. And this is a case tonight where someone saw Orlando here know the things he does and put him in for, and that's for, and was nominated by Addison. Is Addison here? Okay, good. What's your last name? Because I'm not going to butcher it.
Calliope.
That's what I was going to say. I was right. So, little thing here, it's much easier because there's so much to memorize what Orlando does, and I thank the city clerk for putting in large print for me. Orlando is the owner and operator of Menifee's premier Jiu-Jitsu Academy for over 10 years, serving residents with dedication and excellence. Oh, you're such good shape. He's a veteran, so he likes giving back and providing free and discounted training for veterans, first responders, and teachers. And what, you're a Marine?
I was a Marine Corps.
Marine Corps, okay. I just, there's your, okay. I knew that, I knew that'd be coming. He leads in youth safety, he spearheads anti-bullying programs, and offers summer week-long classes for kids. He's also committed to helping our special needs students by providing classes that fit their needs. So that's a really big thing in our community. Our community is very much in tune with that. We have a number of them in our society, so their community, so that's really great that's happening. He's a mentor, he's a community builder, and he contributes to a safe and healthy community through not only just what he teaches, but also through his mentoring kids and everything. And so for that, we'd like to recognize him tonight as our outstanding Citizen of the Month. So, yeah, so I'm going to pass the mic down and get all these extra athletes.
Orlando, it's a pleasure to meet you tonight. I'm looking forward to talking with you a little bit more after this, but first of all, I would like to thank you for your service. Thank you very much, both before, in your service, and then now with what you're giving back to the community. I always say, you know, Menifee is made up of the community, of the people, and the fact that people like you are so willing to give back and do for us, we just appreciate it so much. So, again, thank you so much, Orlando.
Thank you.
And I'm going to pass it over to Dan Temple.
Thanks. You know, I remember taking judo probably 25 years ago, and it hurt. But the thing I remember most was my instructor always incorporated lessons of integrity, respect, responsibility, and I know you do that as an instructor. And that means so much, not only to the physical conditioning and buildup of the people, but also for the moral character. So, thank you. Thank you for what you do and what you do to our people and the community. Appreciate it so much.
Orlando, we had a chance to talk briefly before the meeting, and again, my name is Bob Carwin. I'm the acting mayor. It's the first time we've, we've had a chance to meet. This year, the theme for our state of the city was a city for families. And I really, I think it's spectacular that you're being honored here as the first Citizen of the Month after that theme was made public, because what you've done for children and families in this town is exactly what we're looking for and exactly what we're celebrating. So we really appreciate everything that you're bringing to this community and helping us build a safe, thriving, active community. Mind, body, and soul includes body. People forget that all the time, so thanks for helping us remember that. First of all, give a big hand for him. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to pass the mic to you, maybe to hear a few words about what you're doing and things in the community, and then we'll present you a little certificate on behalf of the city.
So first and foremost, I want to say thank you to the city of Menifee. This city has given me so much. I've been living here for, for almost 17, 16, 17 years between those years, and I've seen it change so much, but you have enriched my life, and I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank my students that are here tonight, just being here for me. I would not be here if it wasn't for you guys, so that's first and foremost. Lastly, this is kind of a coincidence, but I'm getting this, but I'm also working with the Menifee School District. You will see my, my students going out now to after-school programs for the Menifee Unit School District, and we are proud and very excited to teach Jiu-Jitsu, but not just Jiu-Jitsu, self-confidence and discipline to our students. Thank you.
So Orlando, I'll read the certificate for you so everyone knows the honor that you've been given. It says, "In recognition of your outstanding dedication, leadership, and lasting contributions to the city of Menifee, your efforts have created opportunities for growth, encouraged a supportive environment, and contributed to the well-being of many individuals in the community. City Council commends you and thanks you for making Menifee a premier place to be." So this is for you to always remember, the city of Menifee appreciates you. It's the whole room. I love it. Come on, come on right in the middle over here. That way, when he looks at this picture, he'll know everybody who was here to support him. We got a fish eye lens, don't worry about it. I got to be honest, Orlando, I was not expecting that. We should have sat in there and been fine. This is also for you. Some stuff in there for you. That group is something else. We should have made that at the end. You guys are welcome to move up if you want. All right, so now we're on to item number 5.2 on our calendar, honoring America Recycles Day from Waste Management. Could I please ask Waste Management Public Sector Senior Manager and Flag Salute Expert Robert Frederick to come to the podium?
All right. Well, good evening, Acting Mayor, city council staff, city administration, and the public. My name is Robert Frederick, and I am the local area, or local manager for Menifee. I also have my colleague Ashley Perez as well, so we are a duo, and we work together here in the city. So I wanted to spend some time, or we wanted to spend some time this evening, and one, obviously, highlight America's Recycling Day, which is November 15th of every year. But more importantly, talk about our partnership. And when I say our partnership, it is really a collaborative effort. And so as we go through tonight's presentation, I'd like to share our collaborative efforts that we've worked together with not only your staff, city administration, but also our community as a whole. All right. So this slide, we're going to talk about, you know, sustainability. So WM has done a lot of work in our local communities when it comes to improving our sustainability efforts. Specifically, as many of us know SB 1383, WM has done a lot of improvements to allow our customers and our communities to participate in organics and recycling programs. You can see some of our improvements here. I'm not going to drain tonight's slide, but some of our notable improvements include our upgrades to creating renewable energy. Specifically, locally, we are in the works with our El Sabrante landfill to create the landfill gas and bring that back into our communities with our partnership with Southern California Gas. Also, expanding our organics infrastructure as well, so that has been a big focus, so that way our communities like here in Menifee can participate in programs like that. So let alone in 2025, we've had 600 tons of material in California go through our processing facilities within the organics. So some of the fun stuff, so some of our collaborative accomplishments, I can't stress the importance of "we" because this is a team effort. So one of the first things you're going to see is 100% compliance for SB 1383. So the last couple of years, we've done, together, brought all of our commercial and residential customers to 100% compliant and provided them the resources they need to be able to participate in the state program. Outreach activities, so let alone here in Menifee, you're probably thinking 611, that's a lot of outreach activities. There's only 365 days a year. So the outreach activities is a combination of many different things. A lot of that is going to be the work that Ashley's working with our business community. So on average, she's working with 40 to 60 businesses on a monthly average. And then also all of our activities, so for many of, many of our communities, working with our HOAs, doing community presentations, doing Recycling Right workshops, so we did those earlier in the year, as well as, you know, phone calls as well. So that's also, you know, reaching out to communities who are interested in learning more about recycling. So all of those outreach efforts really are collaborative, and that's also working with our, our city partners and city team members here. The next is going to be our impact. So through September of 2025, let alone, this community has recycled 64.86 million pounds. So when you look at that, that is going to be everything on the recycling and organic side. So just in the nine short months that we have completed, and this is through, I'm sorry, the end of September, you can see the great impact that we are making. So what does that mean? And then, and the numbers piece of it, right? So I break it down a little bit more. As a numbers guy, I like to compare this and kind of give a bigger picture. So when you're looking at numbers, I, I try to compare it to the size of an animal. And so when you look at the 64 million, 1.3 million, it would be 1.3 million blue whales as it relates to pounds. So if you think the, the magnitude of the great effort and work that this community is doing.
How do you recycle a blue whale?
You don't. In full transparency, you don't. But if you think of the, the blue whale being on average 15,000 pounds, and you, you take that into a million, so. On the energy side, 120.6 million hours of kilowatt energy saved that we've been able to, you know, save in our communities. The cool number I, I'm, that I come to is the number of space. So when we think of SB 1383, the important goal of SB 1383 is to preserve our landfills, right? To preserve the life, to take the things that are short-lived pollutants out of our landfills. And so doing just that, 94,147 cubic yards of landfill space that we've been able to just in Menifee preserve, so we can, you know, keep our landfills longer. And then 1.7 million pounds of pollutants, which is also pretty cool as well. So connecting with our community, we couldn't do this without our community. So this is just a snippet of the, of the things that we're doing here in our community. So many of you, I've seen a lot of you, the community cleanups. Fun fact, so our community cleanups are averaging a 40% diversion rate. So 40% of the materials that are coming into our community cleanups are being diverted out of landfills, and that's a pretty incredible number. We also have our community shred days that our city team and us host here at City Hall. So we have two free events annually where the community members can come and bring their box of shred, and they can actually see our shred at truck on site, shred that safely. You'll see some of our educational outreach pieces, so our annual service guide, some of our self-service recycling tools that we have on our website, as well as our Recycle Right guide. And then we're really proud to be a part of the Menifee Better Together Project. So Waste Management, every year, partners with the city of Menifee. This is one of our bigger events, as many know. And so this year, we were honored to be a part and donate mulch that was able to be reused in our communities, in our local park for the project. And then part two, so this is just some other events and things that we've been a part of. You'll see everything from our Independence Day celebration up into National Night Out, and then most, my favorite event was when we connect with the businesses. So WM hosted a, what was called Business Social Event earlier in April in partnership with the Chamber, and we provided free resources to our local businesses on how to, you know, get grants, how to work with the different programs of SB 1383, how to make sure that they have all the tools necessary to participate. And I couldn't, I couldn't end the presentation to just, you know, highlight, you know, we're really grateful to be a part of the Menifee community. We thank the city staff, council, and administration for their support. It's definitely, when I say "we," it is a partnership, and we definitely are thankful and want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Councilmembers, do we have any questions or comments for WM on that? Nope. All right. Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Appreciate it. All right. Item number 5.3, our Police Department Quarterly Update. Chief Carr, would you please join us up at the podium?
Well, good evening, Mayor, City Council. Chief Carr here to talk about the third quarter year-to-date update for our safety. And we'll go back one. So slide one here, we're talking about overall calls for service. We are still trending 5% decrease versus last year, which is a great way to move. That still shows up here as well. Staying consistent with our follow-ups, welfare checks, public assistance, disturbance calls, all, everything is staying consistent with the prior years. And our Group A, you'll see an overall 3% reduction, property, society, crimes against persons. You know, still, society's looking pretty good. Probably crimes went up a little bit. We'll explain that here in the next couple of slides. Top five, Group A is your drug and narcotics, simple assaults, aggravated assaults, drug equipment into your paraphernalia, and then other larceny. And you'll see that the simple assaults, aggravated assaults are still related to domestic violence as the majority contributor to those numbers. You'll see here, Group B decreased by 11% this year versus last year. Again, this is your warrants, parole violations, civil restraining orders. And then our top, our top 10 overall this year, biggest increase was our other larceny. This is something that we're relating as we, as we dug deep into it. We believe this contributes partly, or majority, to our U.S. Postal Service inspector that we have onboard as a, as a dual sworn. So most crimes that would be porch piracy and all that would be directly reported to the post office. We'd never hear about it. We're now investigating those, and that's where a majority of this increase came from, was things that we wouldn't have known about before. So we don't really have a big increase. We're now just aware of it and investigating it. Cases overall, decreased by 4%, so pretty consistent with that 5% call for service. And then our, our main violators still maintain to be our 30 to 49-year-olds, crimes against persons, property of society. 7% of those were repeat offender with multiple charges against them. Code enforcement, doing a great job keeping up with, with all their caseload. They have 350 current cases. This is just this year, and what is remaining active while they've closed out, 1,846. So, or I'm sorry, 908 closed, 1,846 were opened up. So you can see that they're out there administering their sites, giving the education, and then removing our signage and debris from the roadways. The Hope Team and HLO, again, rocking it, finding placement, other services, this is getting people connected with Veteran Affairs or other assistance, transitional housing, driver's licenses, things that will help them get back into society. Repeat contacts, 34% of them, you can see 406 contacts over the last quarter. CBAT here, still averaging about 50 minutes, helping people out, 11 homeless, 29 with mental health history, and 15 repeat contacts while still servicing 286 calls during this time. And then some of our outreach, we did our Walk to School Day during this last quarter. Buckle Up BBQ, which was a Texas Roadhouse partnership, along with our Tippicop. So we, we enjoy that partnership and their help with us getting resources out to those that need it. Empowering Abilities Resource Fair, we did this recently at Lazy Creek Recreation Center, and this was talking about our Yana, our reunification, autism safety, and county ride resources. So this was, there was about 15 different vendors. Mayor, you were there, you got to see all the interaction. It was a very good event. Recent accolades, Menifee Police Explorers took third overall at the Riverside Police Department Explorer Competition. Officers Rodriguez, Hernandez were recently honored at the TIP Trauma Intervention Program for Heroes With A Heart for their commitment to helping victims. And then Menifee Police Officer Dylan Foth was recognized at the Empire Blue Bell's Annual Breakfast for Officer of the Year for his dedication and commitment to this community. And as we all retired Emmy, we now have Chente, who has successfully completed his training program. They are taking the streets the first time this coming week, so we're excited to get them out there and working. And then yesterday, we swore in Officer Kyle A, Elena Coverubias, and Eric Delira, along with CSO Don Fatten and Chaplain James Proxmire. With that, I am here to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, do we have any questions for the chief? Yep, go ahead, Councilmember Temple.
Hey, Chief, could you just explain just a bit more of the dual enrollment or dual powers with the postal service and how that is working with the community?
Yes. So this is one of our sworn officers who has been dual sworn into federal law enforcement. And because he has federal powers, he can start looking at identity theft, mail theft across state lines. So we do find that when we have our victims here, it's not just a local issue, it is actually a much bigger national problem. So having that federal authority allows them to expand and get resources that we wouldn't have normally here. And again, this is just information that normally would pile up at our local investigative office, and they'd get to it when they can. Now we have an officer who, in a part-time status, is helping investigate these cases on a local level and helping us solve some of these crimes.
Awesome. Thank you. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
I want to follow up on that, actually. I had the same topic. So one of the, the things that I hear from people is, hey, I've got a Ring camera footage of somebody walking up my porch, stealing my thing. I can see their face, I can see their car, and police aren't willing to do anything about it. They say, well, just chalk it up to a loss. But are, are you telling us that we've got a program in place now where we're actually investigating? But are you telling us that we've got a program in place now where we're actually investigating and trying to prosecute those?
We do. We do. And we're using those, we're using those resources to, again, on the video clarity. We will always say we should be collecting it. So when we have a crime, they have video. We do have a link that they can download that video and then we will put it with the case. And then we do run it through our resources to attempt to identify that person. Now we have federal access. Get a little bit better at your resources identifying people and holding them accountable.
That's great. So if you're a victim of somebody stealing packages, make sure you report it so we can collect the data and we can do that kind of investigation.
Absolutely.
Secondarily, I know that we've just completed on the new substation, the old Bank of America building, we've just completed the asbestos abatement on there. We're getting ready to put it out to bid for the renovation. The schedule for the renovation that they told us at the last meeting was supposed to be completed by October of '26. Whenever that building is done being renovated, how soon after that do you think it'll be functional for police? Are we going to be working so that the day that it's done, we're ready to go? Or does it start after it's done?
So part of that program, we actually already have our furniture and everything identified. So as it comes to fruition and we see how it's going to be outfitted, we'll be able to transition. The expectation would be that substation is not intended to be a public-facing. It will be supportive to the area through services. So everything will still come through our dispatch center as it is now, but we will have the people in place there to address that local community.
But there will be a counter there for people to make reports, right? That's what we've been told the whole time.
No, the second rendition, so the most recent images that you saw, actually removed the counter because we transitioned to the way of what it's being structured. There is not going to be a public-facing counter. That will be our code enforcement. It will be our POP team. It will be our traffic team coming out of there, as well as our partnered agency with Riverside University Health. So we'll have all of the help that we actually focus in that area, in that building, but it won't be a...
So like the seniors in Sun City won't be able to go in there and report crimes or things like that?
Correct. It'll be, it'll be just as it was now. We just don't have the lobby space designed in it currently.
That's disappointing. That's different information than I was given before. All right. Anything else? Nope. All right. Thank you, chief.
All right, thank you.
All right. Next up, Community Services Update. Would Community Services Manager Gabby Cow please come and present the update? There you are.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. I'm Gabby Cow, Community Services Manager. And I'm here this evening to provide an update on all the exciting upcoming programs and events being hosted by the Community Services Department. Our Lazy Creek team is currently prepping for our Thanksgiving Break Camp taking place next week. Registration is currently full, but we are accepting participants on our waitlist. Our Next Parents Night Out will be taking place on October 19th from 6:00 to 9:30 p.m. Children's ages 3 to 12 get to enjoy pizza, group games, arts and crafts, and a movie while giving their parents the opportunity to do some holiday shopping or simply just get a few moments to themselves. Our next round of nominations for Menifee Teen Awards will be due February 2nd. Nominees must be high school students that live or attend school here in Menifee but can be nominated by any non-family member. So that can be a teacher, a coach, a neighbor, a church leader, or any other community member. At the Case Anasera Senior Center, you can find informative presentations such as Pearls, which stands for Program to Encourage Active Rewarding Lives for Seniors, holiday-themed activities like the upcoming festive sweater bingo, and monthly workshops including our transportation workshop that provides information on low-to-no-cost transportation options for seniors and our disabled residents. This Saturday, we encourage you to join us at the annual Trot for a Cause 5K and Fun Run Event taking place from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., rain or shine. Participant check-in will begin at 8:00 a.m. Due to the pedestrian bridge construction, this year's modified run route will take place on the southern portion of the Paloma Wash Trail between La Piedra and Holland Road with a starting point and the festivities being hosted at Santa Rosa Academy. The entrance to general parking is located off of Sherman Road. However, we do have ADA courtesy parking that's located at the main entrance. Participants can enjoy the fun zone, which is free to non-race participants and just requires a waiver and a wristband. And this includes an inflatable obstacle course and a rock climbing wall. And there'll also be food vendors, some craft activities, and a chance to win some opportunity drawings. The fun, of course, continues into December with our annual Christmas tree lighting and holiday bazaar taking place on Saturday, December 6th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at MSJC. You can join us for a community parade, which we are still accepting applications for, food and craft vendors, community performances, and of course, photos with Santa, snow zone and other fun-filled activities for our kids and families. Admission to the snow zone is free with a non-perishable food donation to the Menifee Community Cupboard or an unwrapped gift for Santa's workshop. Families can join Santa for pancakes at the Case Anasera Senior Center on Saturday, December 13th. There are three seating options, starting at 8:00 a.m., 9:15, and 10:30 a.m. After breakfast, participants can create crafts, enjoy live music, and of course, take photos with Santa. Every participant is required to be registered since space is limited and the price is $15 for Menifee resident or $18 for non-resident. However, children 2 years old and under are free. And additionally, we welcome the community to join in on the festive fun through our Menifee's Extreme Light Fight Holiday Home Decorating Competition. Residents can still submit their home for the competition up until Sunday, December 7th. There are multiple categories that you can choose from, including best theme, Clark Rizwald, North Pole Neighbor, inflatable fun, and community favorite. Judges will select the winners for each of the categories. However, we encourage the community to vote for, of course, the community favorite. For more information for upcoming programs and events, you can always visit us at www.citymenifee.us/communityservices. Thank you so much, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cow. Do we have any comments or questions for Community Services? No? Seeing none? Thank you so much. Appreciate the update. Always, whenever, whenever you come up to give us that update, first thing I do is pull out my phone. Pull out my phone to make sure I've got my calendar open and mark everything down. All right. Moving on to item number six on our agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any modifications to tonight's agenda?
No modifications.
All right. We'll ask City Council for an all-in-favor approve the agenda. One, two, three. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? The agenda is approved. Item number seven, Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do.
We do? All right. So I'm going to read the following statement. "This is the time for members of the public to address the council about items which are not listed on the agenda. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. Each speaker will be allotted up to three minutes on any single item." Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Moises Covarubias, followed by Lori Cluff.
Mr. Covarubias?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilors. Thanks for having me back. I appreciate the opportunity to raise awareness about the issue that I'm passionate about, which is electronic harassment. And I know I've kind of gone over a little bit of what this is, but electronic harassment for anybody who doesn't know or who's not aware, comes in three different forms. The first is through V2K or voice-to-scole technology. Now, this harassment bypasses a person's regular hearing mechanism and goes straight into a person's cochlea. Therefore, a person experiencing this harassment is the only person who can hear this sound or noise disturbance. The second way is through remote neuromonitoring. Remote neuromonitoring is essentially mind-reading through a remote device which interprets a person's brainwaves into words, images, and even emotions. The last, or the last way that a person experiences this electronic harassment is through frequency attacks. Now, these frequency attacks are often, cause emotional disturbances in a person. There is a physical element to this harassment, which is community stalking or community harassment. Now, these are carried out in person, in public, also on roads. People are driving around, might experience being or feeling like they're being run off the road. And as far as we know, these are carried out by community organizations like Neighborhood Watch, which sounds kind of bizarre, but also Citizen Corps and InfraGuard. Now, these are community organizations that have been taken advantage of or who may not be aware or who may be given false information about an individual. And therefore, their positive influence in the community is turned into maybe more of a negative thing. Lastly, I'll finish up by saying that President Trump has created a transparency executive order, which is addressing some of these blacklists and some of these activities. He has, for instance, the TSA blacklist that was recently, has been vetted and has been made public. Also, Representative Luna with the Restoration Act has also been moving in a direction of transparency and addressing these issues. Overall, a lot of these people end up on this, in this harassment because of being placed on the terror screening database or being placed on the threat screening center. And so the goal, I'll wrap it up here, is to create awareness as I'm doing...
Mr. Covarubias, your three minutes are up.
Thank you so much. I would just finish by saying there is a website called targetedjustice.com if you would like to, and I do encourage the council to become more aware of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Lori Cluff, followed by Lupe Jenkins.
Good evening, Ms. Cluff.
Good evening. Animal Friends of the Valley is failing the public and so is the city. The most recent statistics available are from August, already out of date, and they only report intake by city, live outcomes, and non-live outcomes. No breakdown of how many animals are housed, how many kennels exist, or how vulnerable animals are protected. I've asked repeatedly for standard operating procedures, the basic policies that govern how AFV operates. I've asked a shelter. I've asked the city. I file public records requests each time I met with silence or denial. Meanwhile, Riverside County provides full SOPs, intake procedures, vaccination protocols, euthanasia policies, all within CEPR guidelines. They post daily statistics showing kennel use, sick or injured animals, and real-time capacity. Riverside County now reports live outcomes at 80% of dogs and 73% of cats. Animal Friends, by contrast, reports only 73% for dogs and 58% for cats. Last year, Animal Friends sheltered 1,964 Menifee animals and euthanized 737 of our pets. 12% of those were healthy and adoptable. Only 62% of our pets make it out of there alive. Animal Friends did not euthanize healthy, adoptable pets until they began sheltering Menifee animals. Since then, euthanasia rates have doubled and now 13% of all animals euthanized are adoptable. This is not only a moral failure, it is a legal one. The Hayden Act prohibits the killing of healthy, adoptable animals. Riverside County is already facing a lawsuit over the violations, yet Animal Friends continues this practice. Menifee residents deserve a city-run shelter that publishes its policies, shares real-time data, and operates under public oversight. Residents need to know their pets are safe, not hidden behind closed doors, outdated spreadsheets, and unlawful practices. Tonight, I ask you to place a City of Menifee Animal Shelter proposal on the agenda. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Lupe Jenkins, followed by Evelyn Richard.
Okay, well, I'm always up here. I don't mind. Anyway, tonight, good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Protem, Carlin. Tonight, I want to speak briefly but firmly about why animal welfare cause must continue to be brought up before this council. Not once, not occasionally, but consistently. I'm addressing this tonight because there have been questions raised about why do you guys keep coming up and talking about these animals? Well, animal welfare is not a side issue. It's not a hobby. It's a, it's a special interest topic or something that can be addressed, once and then forgotten. It's an ongoing, community-wide responsibility that directly affects public safety, public health, and the quality of life for our residents and pets. Every month, new data, new cases, and new challenges arise based on county and local information. Daily, families lose beloved pets. Stray animals wander our neighborhoods without proper resources for containment or recovery. And this is due to the fact that all shelters and rescues are full in Riverside County. And this causes sad and difficult outcomes. Residents continue to express frustration, confusion, and heartbreak as they navigate a system that in many ways is still not meeting their needs. This is resulting in neighbor versus neighbor as missing pets continue to be reported, and it's getting a little bit dicey. If we stop presenting this cause, if we allow silence to replace advocacy, then nothing changes. Problems that already strain our community will worsen. Overcrowded shelters, preventable euthanasias, loose animals creating safety concerns in families who never see their pets again. The more these issues are ignored, the more costly and complicated they become to fix. Presenting this cause month after month is not about repeating complaints. It's about documenting reality, tracking trends, and urging the city to act responsibly and proactively. It ensures transparency, which we don't currently get from AFV. It ensures accountability, and it keeps the council informed of conditions that require leadership planning and resource allocations. Most importantly, it gives a voice to those who cannot speak for themselves, the animals whose welfare depends entirely on the decisions made in rooms like this. It also gives a voice to the residents who are asking repeatedly and respectfully for a system that works, services that are accessible, and policies that both protect pets and people. The work is not finished. The challenges are not solved. And until they are, this cause must remain at the forefront of public discussion. Our community deserves that persistence. Our animals deserve that persistence, and progress depends on it.
Ms. Jenkins, your three minutes are up.
I'm done, too. Right on time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Next speaker?
Evelyn Richard.
Good evening. I am here to thank Mayor Protem and the council for all the wonderful things that have happened in Menifee this past year. We have had shred events. We have had festivals and fiestas and dancing, ventriloquists, and small park events. I love the small park events. And so you've made this a wonderful place. Menifee is now a wonderful place to have fun, to play, to learn, and to meet our neighbors. But particularly, my big hats off is to the staff. Your staff from administration through your staff, through the staff's staff, through your teams, have a wonderful, wonderful outlook on serving the city of Menifee. And it, I mean, it's impressive to watch. I'm stunned because I couldn't do it. I'd have to slap somebody. But they always come with an idea, in pouring rain, in the heat of summer, they're there and they're welcoming. And they say, "Welcome to Menifee. Come on down." You know, "Hope you have a good time. Glad you're here." And then they say, "Thank you for coming. Why don't you come on back?" And it's really, really something to see. Even the people who pick up the trash at these events and drive those little things, you know, I mean, "Hi, how are you?" You know, it's great. And I applaud that. And I applaud the city of Menifee from Mayor Protem and the council, but all the way down, all the way down to all the little people that we never see, you know, and thank you very, very much. We had a great time in Menifee this year.
We're going to end the meeting right there. Any other speakers?
No other speakers.
All right. Moving on to councilmember updates and comments, this is the time for City Council to provide any updates or comments on meetings and events they have attended. We'll start over to the far right with Councilmember Diedrich.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Since the last meeting, I've attended quite a few events. The first one, we were all at, and I just wanted to thank you for the great job you did as our acting mayor, the state of the city on the 7th. Fantastic job, everyone there, even with the little technical difficulties at the beginning that we overcame. On November 12th, attended the Chamber Evening Mixer, which was the frozen turkey fundraiser. You were there as well. That was a great turnout. I was excited to see how many shopping carts full of turkeys were there for the people that need that this year. The following day, attended our neighbor city, Will... The following day, attended our neighbor-city Wildemar State of the City, and then the day after that, the MSJC State of the College. Later that night, attended the Live Jam ribbon cutting with live music that's been going for a year now here in town. So as you always point out, people say there's nothing to do here in Menifee. There is, right? On the 16th, attended the Interfaith Evening of Gratitude. Again, Acting Mayor, I feel like I'm sucking up to you tonight, but you gave a very heartfelt talk that night, and I was very grateful to hear that from you. And then finally, on the 17th, attended the Police Department's Promotion Ceremony, two officers being promoted, so great time. Thank you.
Great report, thank you. Councilmember Temple.
Also on the 7th, attended the State of the City. On the 10th, I went out to Palm Springs to attend the Cal City's District Conference. I was appointed as an alternate representative there. On the 11th, I attended the Veterans Day Memorial here at the city. The 12th, I went out to Paris to attend the High School Student of the Month recognitions. On the 13th, I also attended the Wildemar State of the City, which Ben didn't say anything, but I was recognized as Dan Temple Mayor Pro Tem. So I took some time to make some drastic changes that you'll hear about soon. On the 14th, I also attended the ribbon cutting of Live Jam, and that was awesome. So much fun, and that's a great event that is held every month, twice monthly. On the 15th, I went to the Rural Center to attend the Menifee Heritage Anniversary, and that was great to see the cultural significance of some of the things and families that Menifee has. On the 16th, also I attended the Evening of Gratitude. And then finally, on the 18th, I attended the Menifee PD swearing-in of three officers, a CSO, and our new chaplain. That is my report.
Great report, thank you. Alternate presiding official councilmember, Dynas.
I need to have my nameplate. On the 17th, I also attended the State of the City. On the 8th, that Saturday, I attended the Oasis Veterans Parade. I was able to participate in that, Veterans Day event as well. The 17th, there was a Menifee PD promotion. We had a new sergeant and a new lieutenant. And then today, on the 19th, I attended RTA's Southwest T-NOW Committee Meeting, and during that, we had a presentation on the improvements to the 91-241 toll road system. They're going to make that so you don't have to get off out of the toll road to get over to get onto the 241 South. So if you ever tried that during the week, it's E-ticket ride for all those old people to know what that is. So that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. And before I get my report, I just want to comment, you'll notice there's a lot of overlap in the attendance here, which is great. I just love, our councilmembers are out there, we're part of the community, and everybody should know, except for the ones with initials in the front, nobody gets paid up here for being at those events. We do it because we love the community and we love to serve it. So it's great to see everybody out there. I attended, we saw the report from Chief Carr, the Empowering Abilities Resource Fair at Lazy Creek. That was actually spearheaded by, from our Menifee PD, Jason Cobb and Sheila Lawton. Great event out there. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that more, and it will grow. Of course, there was the State of the City address, which everyone here was at, I hope. The Veterans Day Celebration, which was spectacular, always loved that event. The RCTC Executive Committee, the big issue that came out of there was, we approved the funding of an expansion to the Paris Rail Station. So it's going to be more comfortable, it's going to have some facilities there so people can feel better in a commute and actually start to use that to get into Riverside and LA from there. That's going to be a spectacular thing. WRCO Administration and Finance Committee, it was a closed session, can't report anything out of that. The Chamber Mixer at the Community Cupboard Thrift Shop, I think Justin Matoyer brought a whole shopping cart of turkeys just by himself. So that was from Ninth Shield, give him a shout-out for that. The Live Jam one-year anniversary celebration, which was great, got to cut the ribbon there. I was also at the Historical Society Antelope Menifee Rural Center thing, we missed each other by a little bit, I was there a little bit later, so I got to help fold up the tables and put them away, so that was fun. Always come early. I was humbled to be invited to speak at the Interfaith Council Evening of Gratitude, and if anybody's interested in my remarks, I did post them on my councilmember Facebook page, so if you want to go and read them there, they're available for you. Attended the Menifee PD Promotion Ceremony for Sergeant Ryan McNinch and Lieutenant Raul Perez, congratulations to them. And Chamber Wake Up Menifee at Fairfield Inn. Attended a coach mock trial up at the high school. And then, and I want to make people know this, I did work at my day job a little bit, which is, so I missed a couple of events because of it. So actually, I do occasionally work for a living. So, and then, City Manager Villa, can I announce what you just told me? Or would you, maybe it should come from you instead.
Okay, yeah, we just received a report from the PD about the facility over in Sun City, and I think, I think we are going to include a public lobby in there. I think that was always, that's always been a city council desire to have a public lobby so that our senior citizens can have a physical location where they can express their concerns to the PD. So we will include that in the floor plan.
Excellent, that was what I was hoping, that's what I remembered we approved, and that's what I was hoping we were going to get. So thank you for making sure that stays on the right path, I appreciate that. And those are all of our reports. Moving on to item number 9, Approval of the Minutes. There is one set of minutes for the council consideration. Does the council have any modifications to the November 5, 2025 minutes? All right, so we'll ask the City Council for an all-in-favor approving November 5 regular meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? The minutes are approved. Now we move on to Agenda Item Number 10, the Consent Calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are to be approved in one motion unless a council member requests a separate action on a specific item on the consent calendar. If an item is removed from the consent calendar, it will be discussed individually and acted upon separately. Unless otherwise directed by a member of the City Council, the vote on ordinance adoptions will reflect the prior action of each council member when the ordinance was introduced. However, if a council member is not present at the City Council meeting, their vote will be reflected as absent. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak on consent calendar items? All right, there are none. So are there any items that the council wishes to poll for further discussion? None? Then can I get a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar? And that passes 4-0 with the mayor absent. Skip like three pages of my script now. Moving on to item number 11, Public Hearing Items. This is item 11.1, the Second Reading and Adoption of an Ordinance Adopting by Reference to 2025 California Fire and California Wildland Urban Interface Codes. This is the second reading and adoption of the fire code. Council received a presentation at the November 5 City Council Meeting. Does the City Council wish to receive a presentation on the item, or go to questions of staff? Nothing, all right. So no questions for staff? All right, we'll open the public hearing at 6:55. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
No requests to speak.
And can you confirm the public hearing was legally noticed, and if any correspondence was received?
This item was legally noticed and no correspondence.
All right. I will close the public hearing at 6:56 p.m. Does the City Council have any comments, or any need to discuss the second reading of this item? All right, can I ask for a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance as presented? In the words of Kermit the Frog, "Moving right along."
Mayor, if I may, that passed 4-0.
It passed 4-0. It was up on the screen, right? People could see that?
It is.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for keeping me on track. All right, item number 12, there's nothing on the Discussion Item Calendar. Mr. City Attorney, anything to report?
No, Mayor.
Nothing. Mr. City Manager, anything to report?
No, Mayor.
Does the City Council have any requests for future agenda items at this time? Nope. Hearing none, then we are adjourned at 6:57.